I'm now called to order the September 11th, 2025 Meeting of Mayor and Council. I'd like to call in Pastor Shirley Head, under the leadership of Dr. Juliet Berry, Joyful Sound International, to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us bow our head in a word of prayer. Father God, in the mighty name of Jesus, Lord God, we just come to say thank you. We thank you for another day, Lord God, just to be above ground and make things right with you and with others. Lord, I ask that you touch each one of these city officials right now, in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank God for the mayor and this great team of officials that walk beside him. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together to make decisions together and to make things right and make a better city of Valdosta for us all. We do thank you in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, good, you made it. Before we proceed, I'd like to make one quick acknowledgement. A man who served our city so very well, both as private citizen and for eight years as our mayor, is in attendance, Mr. John Gale. John, thank you. All right, that was a raucous round of applause, and now I'm going to ask for just the opposite. If you don't mind joining me in a moment of silence on this ominous state, September 11th, 24 years ago, we lost many, many citizens and our way of life. Thank you, Council. Thank you for all in attendance. Move on to the minutes for approval. Council's had time to review the minutes from the August 7th, 2025 regular meeting. Council, are there any additions or deletions at this time? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll accept those by acclamation. The minutes from the August 21st, 2025 regular meeting are forthcoming. We'll move on to the items before us. We'll start with our public hearing items. Item A, consideration of an ordinance for a conditional use permit for the placement of a mobile home in a single-family residential R6 zoning district. The brilliant Matt Martin, our planning director, to present. Hi, Matt.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. There are six public hearing items listed on the agenda from the Planning Commission. The sixth item, which I believe is subsection item F, that is a case for rezoning that has been withdrawn by the applicant. I would recommend maybe making that announcement in case there's anyone here.
I sure will.
So they don't have to wait till that point on the agenda.
Matt, thank you.
All right, the first one is a conditional use permit request by Valerie Dwyer for property located on Mills Lane, at 114 Mills Lane, on the west side of the street, about 400 feet north of West Hill Avenue. Property is owned R6. The request is for the placement of a double-wide mobile home. Information about that is there in your packet, but it is a dwelling that's about 1,900 square feet. You see the zoning pattern of the subject area. It's dominated by R6. Character area is transitional neighborhood. Aerial image, you see the rooftops of the many dwelling units. Approximately half of those are existing mobile homes. Those are, many of those are initial use permit requests that have been approved in the past 15 or 20 years. This is a similar type proposal is what has been approved. A mixed residential pattern. The property is .44 acres, as indicated by the updated survey. This is a site plan in conjunction. The subject property is the southern half of that drawing, where you see the footprint of the dwelling. Proposed mobile home schematics are there in your packet to show the sod elevation, as well as the floor plan. Pretty good-sized dwelling in it. This is a brand-new one, and it meets our supplemental standards for the placement of mobile homes. The neighborhood, as I said, is residential. There have been numerous mobile home conditional use permit requests in this neighborhood. Planning Commission reviewed the request at public hearing on August 25th. They found the request consistent with our comprehensive plan, the conditional use review criteria, which are there in your packet, recommending approval subject to two conditions as follows. Number one, conditional use approval shall be granted for a Class A double-wide manufactured home, as defined by the LDR, and in general accordance with the submitted site plan and schematic drawings. The home shall be placed at least 30 feet from Mills Lane on a permanent all-masonry foundation with brick or brick veneer skirting. Second, conditional use approval shall expire two years from the date of approval if the building permit for the manufactured home has not been issued by that date. The work session, of course, we cover the details, but to go through the imagery fairly quickly, this is the subject property, vacant residential lot. The house immediately to the north, across the street to the east is some vacant property and an existing church, looking southward down Mills Lane toward West Hill Avenue, and then some of the other mobile homes nearby. This is in the areas up around the corner to the north. These are some of the more recent approvals. Be glad to answer any questions you may have on this one.
Council, any questions for Matt? Let's see, none. Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anybody that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, Council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the CUP with the two conditions as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Matt, thank you. Move on to item B, but before we do, please silence all phones and mobile devices. Item B, consideration of an ordinance to rezone, requested by Sharpco Developments LLC. Matt Martin again to present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is rezoning of about a half acre of land located at 1515 Hickory Road. This is in the North St. Augustine Road corridor. As you see, there's a mixed zoning pattern of the area. The proposal is to go from R10, which is single-family residential, to CC, which is community commercial. You might remember from some of the other rezoning requests we've had over the years, where the perception of the commercial corridor has now gone further back from the road, and you see where the commercial zonings are in place. Subject property has a character area of community activity center, which allows a variety of zonings in the multifamily high-density range, as well as commercial. Community commercial is allowed on local streets, so that is kind of the top of the food chain in terms of those eligibilities. Aerial imagery, this is from a couple of years ago. Directly across the street to the west is the Hog &amp; Boons Restaurant, which is still showing is under construction here. The Camelot Suites, excuse me, Calda Wood Suites extend to stay motel, four-story, they're off to the northwest. You see the commercial properties along St. Augustine, and then the residential proportion of the streets back up to the northeast. Site plan and survey drawing are in your packet. It's an existing single-family residence. Applicant owns a small construction company looking for a home base, and so they want to convert the existing residence into their business office with a little bit of parking, and as you see, plenty of room on the site. Boundary survey showing the dimensions of the property and some of the features that are there. Subject property is seen from Hickory. This is how it looks currently. Interior renovations are already underway. Applicant proposes to enclose that carport as to, as an expansion to the building, and then the parking lot in the front yard. Side yard, looking toward the rear yard, is that view, and then in the back, plenty of room and a vacant parcel behind it. And then adjacent, the view back towards St. Augustine Road, the restaurant there on the right, the commercial property next door, the motel diagonally across the road, the view back up into the neighborhood, and the other remaining single-family home that's immediately to the north of the subject property. Planning Commission reviewed the rezoning request at their public hearing on August 25th, found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, these standards for exercise of zoning power, which are there in your packet, and recommending approval by unanimous vote. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any further questions? Any from, you didn't answer on Tuesday. All right, Matt, thank you. Again, a public hearing item. Is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Again, please state your name and address.
Good afternoon. Alex Sharp, we're Sharpco Developments. I'm just here to answer any questions you may have about our request for rezoning.
Council, I need for Alex. Alex, I think you're off the hook. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, Council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the presentation as such.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. All in opposition? Okay. It was unanimous. Move on to item C, consideration of an ordinance to rezone, 3.27 acres from conditional community to regular community commercial, as requested by Andrew Durin, property at 417 Brookfield Road. Matt again.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This one's a little bit unusual in the rezoning request world, like we talked about at the work session. It is currently conditional CC zoning, and the request is to go to regular CC zoning. The conditions on the property currently, and as were placed there back in 2004, were to have CN uses on property with CC development standard. So it's sort of a hybrid of the two zoning districts. As we talked about in the work session, the request back then was from a county annexation re-zoning of highway commercial, highway commercial in the city. The minutes indicate that was a very controversial public hearing, and so the conditions were placed there as a result. However, the net outcome of that has been no development on the property all these many years. Property is encumbered by a large power line easement, which inhibits it for some, many purposes, particularly a large building, but the property is under contract with the same owner, but with a little different site plan. Zoning pattern in the area is dominated by commercial zoning along Brookfield with commercial NRP zonings. You see the CH zonings up to the north. Those are the large shopping centers associated with Publix and Walmart. Character area is Neighborhood Activity Center, which is basically the Murray Road corridor, which has those more intensive zonings and uses. Aerial image, you see it's a vacant property. Property to the northwest is also vacant, and zone commercial. And then the RP property is a pretty good-sized apartment complex there in the lower left. In your packet include the boundary survey, where you see the 100-foot-wide power easement going through the middle, and then a conceptual site plan. Applicant is proposing to develop this, they think, into four buildings with the 100-foot-wide power easement crossing the parking lot area where it's allowed. And then you see the other site amenities that, of course, includes stormwater and so forth. Like we talked about at the work session, this layout pattern is eligible, be submitted for plan review tomorrow as it's currently zoned. The only difference is the uses that are allowed. Applicant owns a floor-covering business that is allowed in CN zoning with the conditional use. That was one of their options. However, it is unusual to have a zoning district of one category tied to uses of a different zoning district. And so my recommendation to them was to seek rezoning instead of conditional use. It's the same process. So with that, Planning Commission is recommending approval of the rezoning to regular CC after finding consistent with the comprehensive plan, these standards for exercise of zoning power, which are enumerated in your packet, and recommending approval by a six-to-one vote, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions for Matt on this one? Matt, thank you for getting over that technicality on the two properties, too. That was wonderful. Well done. Again, it's a public hearing item. Is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Please do so. There is movement. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. My name is Nathan Brantley. I'm at 701 North Patterson Street, Valdosta, Georgia. I represent the applicant and prospective purchaser of this subject property. It is a unique piece of property and probably the first instance that you've ever seen where you're rezoning from CC back to CC. And, and it's because of the unusual condition that it has to meet the CN requirements, which apparently were put on it approximately 21 years ago or so, whenever the property was annexed. So that zoning designation, having to meet the CN conditions, along with the Georgia Power easement running right through the middle of the property, have created really unique conditions that have limited the marketability of this property. This property has been on and off the market many times throughout this 21-year period, and that there have been offers that have fallen through, and primarily because of the limitations of this Georgia Power easement that's running right down the middle of the property. So we feel like our design professionals have come up with a innovative solution to fully utilize all of the property by placing the parking lot in the middle of the property and letting the Georgia Power easement run over the property, the parking lot, rather than over the top of the buildings. So what my clients are wanting to do, they're wanting to build four buildings. One will be a flooring showroom for a flooring business, and then the three others will be office, just office space. Now, you may ask yourselves, why didn't we just go for a conditional use permit? Well, one of the office tenants is likely to be a contractor's office, which is not allowed in the CN zoning. So we needed to get the conditional use for the CC zoning type. And additionally, we wanted to have the flexibility for the future tenants to keep them from having to come back before you and ask for a conditional use permit every time we get a new tenant in the property. We'd rather just go ahead and try to get it rezoned right now to CC, so, so we can market it to all of those tenants that could have those potential uses. In the, in the Planning Commission meeting, there were some concerns about flooding on the property, and I want to assure you that we have addressed those concerns. We've got plans ready to submit as of, right, I think as of tomorrow, if you, if you approve the rezoning request tonight. But they are certainly prepared in accordance with all the LDR drainage requirements, in any, any other requirements that the LDR requires. So that, the drainage issues are being taken into account. If you'll notice on the plan, there's proposed drainage or detention ponds around the perimeter of the property. Also, there's going to be some screening at the back of the property. We think that the, the neighborhood area or the comprehensive plan supports this rezoning, being that the character area is Neighborhood Activity Center. So we feel like it's a, it's a, a good way to maximize this property that sat vacant for quite some time, and it really fits in with the area. There are other hardware businesses in the area. There's other commercial businesses in the area. It's right behind the Walmart and the Publix. So we feel like it's a good use of the property, the best one that's come around in approximately 21 years. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any. My clients are also here, if you had any questions that I can't answer.
So you've already performed two public services. You captured that water that flooded that intersection on a regular basis, and you, you had a high-speed chase coming out of Blue Pool over your curb, through that field, and onto Murray Road about six months ago, too, a very high-speed chase right during the middle of the day while daycare kids were just on the other side of that fence.
Well, I think they're gonna have a tougher time doing that in the future if there's a drainage ditch across the back with trees and, and also fencing.
They're gonna have to get some air.
Right. You're right.
Council, any, any further questions for the representative for the applicant? Awesome. Ms. Cody. All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward at this time and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Again, please state your name.
Pastor Michael Hazard, 351 Sawgrass Drive, my house abuts this property right here. I have no knowledge of, of how, of a high-speed chase. I've been there for over a year, and I live right by where you're talking about in that area. And to me and to my dog, it hadn't happened. Besides that fact, there is traffic going through that property for the reason of we have handicapped people that live there that cannot drive. If they block that area off, they would have to go where there's no sidewalks. Think about that, no sidewalks. So now you're gonna push the public, handicapped people, into the street to get to Walmart or to get to Publix. Now, I, I brought this up before, that there's a nice property right across the street that abuts Walmart, that doesn't interfere with any, anybody that lives in any houses, because the apartments are across the street. That would be perfect, because Walmart would be at their back, they would have no, and there's, there's a childcare center next to that, and then there's a spa next to that. There's nothing but business on that side. But them closing that off would stop the elderly that needs to get to Walmart and Publix, which is about a three-minute, five-minute travel for them, they have to go all the way to BMS, and then go all the way down to inner perimeter, and they go all the way down inner perimeter, to which there's no sidewalks. Now, if you can address the sidewalk issue to make that feasible, or to at least allow them to have a pass-through for foot traffic or for handicapped people to get through their parking lot to get to the way they was going, then there shouldn't be too many problems. The second thing they have to address is now they're gonna put a strain on our, on our electric lines. They have to address that, because storm season is coming. We have to address the storm season. We haven't addressed that yet either, because when the power lines go down, everybody goes down. And if you put a strain on that power line, it's gonna be even worse. So I heard them talk about flooding and all of that stuff. That's well and good. What are you gonna do about the power grid? How are you gonna ease the power grid strain that you're gonna put? You got one business there, now you're putting three more businesses, along with all the houses that's on that same grid. Nobody addressed that. So I think that needs to be addressed before this goes any further. The sidewalk has to be addressed, because that's, we should have had a sidewalk a long time ago. We still have no sidewalk. We're trying to put buildings up, we're not thinking about sidewalks. We're thinking about the, the corporations, we're not talking about the people who pay taxes. So if we pay taxes, shouldn't we have sidewalks? We should see where our taxes are going. Our streets need to be fixed, hadn't been fixed. We don't have sidewalks. We've been making do, but now we want to make do to let the corporate people make sure that they get what they want. But it's high time that you guys think about the people and what we need, not what we want, what we need. Let's address that first. Let's table this until we find out how you're gonna address what we need, before you give them what they want. Thank you, everybody. I don't know who everybody else, but thank you guys for listening.
Pastor, Pastor, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request?
Good evening to you.
Good evening.
My name is Jacqueline Major. I live at 346 Brookfield Road. I am just a stone's throw away from where this proposed building is. I am not at all against growth in this community. I think it's very much needed, but like the gentleman that spoke before me, I am concerned about what the impact on the neighboring community is going to be. We are experiencing some drainage issues on 346 Brookfield that have had to be attended to by the City of Valdosta on numerous occasions. Just recently, a few weeks ago, in front of my own home at 346 in January of 2024, you had to come and remove large portions of concrete, survey where the, the breakage was in the line, because water began to come up out of the concrete. So I was one home that was affected by the drainage repair. One to the right of me, two houses down, one to the left of me, one house down, and I think another three houses down on my left, there was also a need for repair. We do sit downhill, as was mission, mentioned in the last meeting, from this proposed buildout. What happens to our drainage lines when we are downhill from where this project is getting ready to be proposed? Is that gonna put additional strain on us as the neighboring community? And also, as this gentleman stated, we do have substantial problems with having power restored in that area. I am not on the Georgia Power Grid, I am on the Calquit Grid. And when we had those last two storms, Calquit had a Dickens of a time getting us back up. As a matter of fact, during one of them, it was 11 days after the storm. We could not speak to anyone at Calquit, because all their doors were closed. They were not taking any calls from any of the neighboring community, and the problem I had was I had no one to talk to to say, our lights on this street are still not on. It took a call to EMC headquarters in the state of Georgia to alert Calquit that they still had... to alert Calquit that they still had people that they serviced without power. So my concern is, if they can't see us on this grid already, and we further tax it, be it Georgia Power or whatever this build-out is going to include, what position will that leave us in these neighboring communities with? Again, I am all for the proposal as far as growth in our community is concerned. I just hope that as the neighborhood around you has already been built, we will be considered and that this proposal will not further tax us as far as water, lights, and even internet service is concerned. And that's what I wanted to say to the committee, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Drainage, yeah. Anybody else that wants to come forward at this time and speak in opposition to this request? All right, seeing none, counsel, this one's yours for action. Yep. And I don't think it's the forum to be addressed. Again, this is a rezoning, but we will address the drainage with Ben O'Dowd, our engineer, in back. Eric, thank you. Yes. All right, counsel, yours for action.
Mayor, and I do appreciate the comments of the citizens that have come forward, but you know, the individual owns this property, has been paying taxes on this property, and has had a lot of difficulties trying to market it and get business to locate on there, and especially with the handicap with the easement. And what they're proposing to put there is very, I mean, the water control, first and foremost, will address virtually all of the flooding issues. Of course, electrical would not be affected by this. But I think the request is reasonable, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this as presented.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So when I was in college, I lived at 342 A Brookfield. And so I've seen people and handicapped and just citizens go through that path. We have also had, we have had some not-so-good things to come through that path as well. You mentioned the high-speed chase. There should be some kids stealing out of Walmart, running through there. So I mean, it's been a lot of things. So that path has, I don't know, I've seen it. So however, with the water, I believe having that space there, it actually helps that area, because now it just helps. A retention pond. A retention pond would definitely help with that area. So, but yeah, we definitely have to consider the sidewalks and all that good stuff. And I think that we have a plan in place to get that done. I'm not sure how soon that will happen, but we've definitely been looking at that, and that's a part of some of those plans. Am I correct?
Yes.
City manager, could you speak to that?
Yes, part of our SPOS nine, you know, we're looking at sidewalks in that area. Haven't designed anything yet, but we're looking at that area for sidewalks, yes.
And Matt, quick question. Isn't that a mixed bag of Georgia Power and Calquit EMC in that corridor?
Yes, Mayor. I don't know the precise geography, but I think the boundary line between those two power companies runs near here. The one comment, the power line that runs overhead, this has no direct impact on that. That is a feeder line for the city. You may recall, the very west end of Murray Road at Oak Street is a pretty large substation. That is what is connecting that part of the city to the rest of the world, and this major power line is feeding that substation. Development on this property, same as with the other properties around it, feed into the local distribution network for electrical, so there's no direct connection to the power lines. It's all being channeled through that substation to the west. And drainage, like you said, is being taken care of with that site plan. The other comment I would make about sidewalk and access, this is private property. But even that being said, residents from the neighborhood to the east are walking through a grass lot. That site plan in your packet shows a parking lot as part of this development all the way up to that property line. If the neighbors want to get with this private owner or the new private owner, they may have an opportunity to walk on pavement instead of grass, and I would count that as an improvement. But an opportunity is there.
Matt, thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second before us. All in favor, show of hands? You want to come up and speak in opposition? We got a motion on, I got a motion on the table. I closed it out, I'm sorry. But please voice your concerns after the meeting to us, if you would. All right, motion and a second before us. All in favor, show of hands? In opposition, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you to all. Move on to item D. Consideration of ordinance to rezone a total of 6.17 acres from residential agriculture in the county to single-family residential R-10 county to all residential professional. Matt, thank you. Please explain.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a pair of requests for rezoning and annexation. And remember, we can hear these together as one for one public hearing, one presentation. But when it comes time to make motion and vote, we need to vote on them separately, beginning first with the rezoning. The applicant is George T. Biles, and by operation of state law, the City of Valdosta as well, based on geography. But in your packet, which is a combined packet of both requests, first map depicts the city limits area. And you see the gray area is unincorporated Lowndes County. The white area is the city limits. And you see the subject property is bounded by the city limits on three sides. Current zoning of the subject property in the county is residential agriculture as well as R-10. There are three separate parcels in play. The northern R-10 is part of the private ownership. The RA is also part of the private ownership. That southerly R-10 piece, the square portion of that, is city property that had a pump station and something that we are no longer actively using. And so that is in a real estate negotiation there. But it is being brought in, because to annex the property around that would create an island, which is prohibited by state law. And under state law, we cannot interfere geographically with an annexation request. So we're brought along with that as a public entity. But you see the rest of the zoning pattern dominated by commercial zonings to the north, in the city and in the county, residentials to the south, and most of the area to the west of Bemis Road is still agricultural-type zoning. But one good feature to note is the RP zoning that exists already on the property to the east-northeast. You might remember the vacant landlocked parcel there from several months ago. It was the subject of a different rezoning request from RP to commercial. That request was denied. So it is still RP, still in the city limits. The applicant in this case, the developer, is wanting to rezone all of this subject property to RP to match the RP that is there, and then do a combined development of all the properties. Area-to-area Neighborhood Activity Center from here northward, more intensive Community Activity Center to the south, between North Forest Extension and Bemis. And then you see suburban area to the east and rural residential to the west. As part of the annexation request, we have an opportunity to amend the character area map if we so choose. The recommendation is to leave it the Neighborhood Activity Center, so it continues to fit that pattern. Aerial imagery, you see the treetops and the rooftops of the existing buildings. There is an existing cell tower in the southwest corner of the property. That is a leased parcel. That will remain. And the rest of it will be developed. Survey drawing shows the more detailed geography of the area. Conceptual site plan for the 6.17 acres is shown here. Townhouse-style multifamily is what is being proposed. And then the overall pattern would add about 30 more dwelling units if combined with that existing RP property to the east. Some imagery, this is the northern R-10 property with the house that is sitting there. It is currently vacant. The main house in the center of the property, the view looking southward down Bemis Road, across the street into the agricultural area. And then northward up Bemis, we have the city on the right and the county on the left. Again, a mixed pattern of zonings. They were eligible for commercial zoning, but chose to go with RP because of the high-density residential that they are proposing, which, as noted in your packet, is a reduced number of units than what they could otherwise have in RP. And that's the difference between townhouse-type apartments and regular. So the request is for RP zoning for all 6.17 acres. Planning Commission reviewed both requests at their public hearing on August 25th. Now, both requests consistent with the comprehensive plan. He stands for exercise of zoning power, and they're recommending approval unanimously. One footnote to that is, since it's an annexation, we gave official notification to Lowndes County. For a 30-day clock, Lowndes County has raised no objections, but we have the green light to proceed. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, on either the rezoning or the annexation. All right, Matt, thank you. Again, it's a public hearing item. If there's anybody that wants to come forward and speak in favor of this request, please do so. And you can speak on both issues.
Yes, sir. Matthew Inman, 2704 North Oak Street Extension. I'm the engineer for the project. We think it's a great project in that it's kind of an island on that side. It's not a totally separate island, but it is, you know, everything on the right of Bemis Road, all the way up there is already city property. This would get one of the county parcels into the city. You know, city and water sewers all available to the property. We'll have an access off of Bemis Road, and then also have one to the rear, to the commercial property to the north of us. In our opinion, this makes a great transition. It's all single-family, south of us. The Hawthorne North Subdivision is being built. There's 58 lots just south of this property, and everything north of us is commercial. So, you know, townhome-type development is a good transition from that single-family up to commercial area. You know, really here to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
Counsel. Inman. Any other questions? Please.
I was looking at this project. It look like a really nice project and so forth. Do you see like with this need and so forth, that it's attractive to more or less the middle-class, young-class, the new-up-and-going class?
Yes, ma'am. You know, the dream, when I was a kid, the dream was everybody wanted acre lot and a house. And, you know, that's gotten very expensive to do. So this type of development, I think there's a big need for it. There's several developments further north of here, and they're all ended out. Every one of them, as soon as they sell them, they're building them out and getting rid of them. You know, they don't stay on the market, you know, a week at a time. So there's definitely a need in this area for that type of development, and I think it'd be a great addition for the city.
It seemed like a very good project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Saying none. Is there anybody that would like to come speak in opposition to this request? Again, saying none, counsel. The first is yours for action, rezoning.
You're doing the annexation first?
The first will be the rezoning. Rezoning first.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this rezoning.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Now before you is the annexation. I believe the city's about to grow by 6.17 acres.
Mayor, I'd like to approve the request for annexation.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. We just grew. Thank you, applicant. Move on to item. I don't need to annex it twice. That would be 12 acres. As Matt stated at the beginning, we move on to item F, the consideration of an ordinance to rezone 1.80 acres from single-family residential R-15 to single-family residential R-6, as requested by Stoker Development. That applicant has withdrawn that request. We'll move on to bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Item A, consideration of bids for a 40-yard grapple truck for our Public Works Department. John Burton, our motor pool superintendent, will present.
The Public Works Department needs to purchase a new 40-yard grapple truck. This truck will be used for clearing yard debris, large special pickup assignments, and storm damage clearing throughout the city. Sealed bids were received on August 27th, and I recommend that counsel approve low-bid median specifications by four-star Freightliner for $285,000.
I will not move it forward until Teresa puts it on the screen. You can't get it up?
There's something wrong.
I wanted you out there, as excited as we are, this is one of those very large-capacity grapple trucks that you saw post-hurricanes. This one is like the ones that had the, the ones that had the Bunyan on it. The city and Councilman Gibbs saw a need to have one of these in our arsenal, and it's a big day to get one that is gonna allow us to clear some of the larger debris that our small grapple trucks get beat up trying to handle. So they're working on it. All right. Any other questions for John? We can't supply pictures.
With this new truck coming in, Mr. John is gonna be able to pick up all the debris in all surrounding areas in the City of Valdosta, correct?
It would take a long time for just one, and we're just buying one right now. But as far as picking up what the Bunyan trucks could pick up, it'll pick up everything that they'd pick up.
Any other questions?
I just, I mean, I know, I'm glad we're getting this grapple truck, you know, for us to be able to utilize. But in the meantime, going off of what Councilwoman Cody was saying, we're only limited right now to pick up what's within the ordinance, correct? So is that something we've got to change or what?
Well, we'll probably have to change to larger pickup, special pickup assignments, and it'll be able to pick up larger debris.
So this won't be, this will be for yard debris, or we'll be using this just for like refrigerators and things of that nature?
It'll be able to pick up anything that we want to pick up. Anything that you guys decide you want to do, it will pick up.
Right. The ordinance would need to be adjusted to determine the size, but everything would still need to be put out on the right of way. You still can't go on city property. But anything that could be put out on the right of way, this vehicle, this piece of equipment, could pick it up.
Yes.
So Mr. Hardy, sir, would the citizens have to call in for that pickup? It'd be like a regular, like the regular routes are?
Haven't decided on the process yet, but we'll outline it through an ordinance and run it through counsel for approval.
Thank you, sir.
When would that ordinance be before us?
I can't give an exact date right now.
It will take 10, at least 10, 11 months to get this.
Okay.
So you'll have plenty of time.
I just want to maximize it, that's why.
Yeah, you'll have plenty of time. It won't be here for this year's storm season, but it'll be here well before next year's storm season.
Be able to be ready to go when it comes in, that's all. It'll be ready. Thank you.
Please don't jinx this. We're not having a storm this season.
We're just being prepared.
John, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
285.
Four-star Freightliner. Yes, four-star Freightliner.
John, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the bid as stated.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands? Andy got his grapple truck. All right, move on to item B. Consideration of bids for replacement of the HVAC chiller unit at the Valdosta Lowndes Regional Crime Lab. Police Chief Leslie Manahan will present. After her incredible speech out at Air Force Base Air Park today for a 9/11 ceremony. Well done, chief.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thank you again for the lunch today. That was delicious. I've gotta get my HVAC. I'm coming before you tonight, again, like Tuesday night, to get consideration for you all to approve us to move forward with buying a new HVAC chiller system for the Valdosta Lowndes Regional Crime Laboratory. Current one is over 16 years old. It breaks down a lot. As a matter of fact, it broke down this week, so we had to have somebody go out there and fix it again as well. So it's getting expensive to continue to repair it over and over and over. So we did put it out for bid. Three bids did come in. The first one was Boldair out of Atlanta for $185,264. The second bid was from Ray &amp; Sons Heating and Air for $197,713. And then Lang Mechanical came in at $229,000, but they did not give the specs that we needed. So this year in the FY '26 budget under SPOS State, Mayor and Council has approved us to get. to get $280,000 to replace that HVAC, so we're coming in way under that, and we're asking to go with Ray &amp; Sons in the amount of $197,713. Reason we're asking to go with them, they do meet all our specs, they have an extra-year warranty on the labor, and they are local, so if something does happen, we'll be able to get them quicker. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for chief? That's what you ask. You got your warranty, Ms. Cody.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request presented by our chief.
Second. I got a motion and a whole lot of seconds. All in favor? Show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Chief, thank you. We're now going to move on to the citizens-to-be-heard portion of our evening. We ask that you come forward and state your name and address, so we may have it for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It is our policy to follow through with you and your concern immediately after. Additionally, we ask any groups that want to come forward, please designate a spokesperson. Again, in the interest of time, having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Please identify yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Kelly Saxton, and I come before you all to ask a question. At a time like this, we must ask, where do we go from here? This is not the moment for distractions or personal agendas and aspirations that limit the progress of our community. Our community has been making progress towards the right direction. The recent events within our local government have threatened to do just that. Under the guidance of our manager, we've been able to move things forward, solidifying opportunities, and laying the groundwork for lasting change. Rather than dwelling on conflict, let's redirect our energy to the real issues at hand. We're asking council to stand with the citizens and focus on what matters the most. We have a JIMA program that is ending the end of this month, where many families will find themselves homeless with nowhere to go. We have 189 children in one of the school systems who are in the homeless program. We need to focus on expanding housing affordability, improving our roads, drainage, infrastructure, creating better employment pathways, and sustainable wages for Valdostans who are struggling to make ends meet. The call is clear. Let's move past the vision and focus on building the future this community deserves. We have been through enough. We don't need any setbacks or personal agendas affecting the progress that's being made. The call is clear. In the spirit of the late, great John Lewis, if you come together with a mission and is grounded with love and a sense of community, you can make them possible, possible. Thank you.
Kelly, thank you. Is there any other citizen wishing to be heard at this time?
Malik Wilkerson, 1212 West Magnolia Street. Good evening, Mayor Matheson, council. As stated, my name is Malik. I'm a native son of Valdosta, a proud graduate of Valdosta City Schools, and a concerned citizen of our beloved community. I rise today speaking on behalf of several organizations in our community, such as the People's Tribunal, People for Progress of South Georgia, and the Episcopal Mercy Courage and Action Campaign. Together, we have united our efforts to launch an initiative to rename Gordon Street to John Lewis Avenue. In recent years, our community has seen great progress regarding matters on racial equality. The building of Unity Park, renaming Forest Street to Barack Obama Boulevard, Christ the King Civil Rights Mural, and Valdosta's Doors to Freedom Monument are all a testament of how far we've come as a community. Based on our research, Gordon Street was named after John B. Gordon, a former Confederate Army general. However, what many may not know is that Gordon was also the leader of the KKK of Georgia, and that he firmly supported slavery, and said that slavery was, and I quote, "kindly, Christian, politically right, and beneficial to black people." The west side of town is home for me. I grew up in Hattaw. I went to SL Mason. I've walked Gordon Street home many times, and it is our fervent belief that Mr. Gordon is not someone who is reflective of Valdosta, its values, and the residents of that street. In contrast, Congressman Lewis is one of the most recognizable and respected faces of the civil rights movement, participating in the Nashville sit-ins, the Freedom riots, becoming the chairman of SNCC, helping organize the March on Washington, and the March on Selma. And he obviously was later elected to Congress, representing Georgia's 5th district until his death in 2020. Congressman Lewis, a fighter of economic and racial justice, deserves to have a street named after him. In ordinance, in accordance with the city ordinance number 2023-12, we would do our part to make this happen in the coming weeks and months. Renaming this street is not only more fitting for our community, but it will also maintain the momentum of recent years of our city. So if you believe that our good work has just begun, that Valdosta's best days are yet ahead, and you are in support of this initiative to rename the street, please stand. City council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. It's actually, it's actually a relief. I thought we were going to have a whole lot of people, our citizens, to be heard. Is there any other citizen wishing to be heard at this time?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Antavion Carver. I live on 912 North Oak Street. I'm also a native to Valdosta, been here since 2010. Lived here before roughly in 2003, when I was a kid, much smaller then. And I, for most of my life, I've called Valdosta home, and I've walked these streets many a time, I've driven these streets, and I've seen one thing that always remained a constant: we can be more, and we should do more. And one thing that I always find myself asking, why don't we have proper public transportation? I mean, we have Valdosta on demand, and while that is a good first step, it's, quite frankly, not enough. Why can't we be like our sister city Albany and have an actual bus? Valdosta has the space. We certainly can build a station down in downtown over the bridge and actually put workers to work, people who actually have the mechanical know-how to upkeep and manage diesel buses. And then furthermore, in terms of affordability, why don't we have more affordable housing? Like the previous plan I heard earlier about the multi-dwelling unit with the annexation of the six-acre property, I think that's a wonderful idea, and we should see more of it. But I always just... Sorry, I'm just, this is my first time at one of these.
It's all right.
But I always just wanted to just make my voice heard, because I always have the question of, why? Why can't we? And we should. No? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Antavion Carver. Carver.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard this evening?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
My name is Cecil Hardy, 1006 River Street. My second time attending one of the meetings here, and I was here before. I want to let you know what I have to attend with at 1006 River Street, with the construction company right next to me, Stroh's Construction. I'm speaking for, I went around the neighborhood and just, you know, talked to the neighbors, passed out flowers, I tried to get them to join me on this matter.
Pause that. We get it.
Excuse me?
You can pause that. We get it. We understand.
No, this is what I have to listen to all day, you know? So I just want you to know how terrible this is, man. This is my front door, and not only this, it's the, it's the, it's the street. My house is less than 30 feet away from the yellow, double-yellow line on River Street. There's so much noise there, you know? The city, Valdosta says, well, the city without limits, if I'm repeating that right. Can you repeat that for me? Valdosta, Valdosta, the city. Well, can I, you are the mayor, right? So I can kind of talk directly to the mayor. So we're just, you know, it's just something need to be done. I've been, I've been in this, at this residence since 1963, the same time Stroh's Construction moved in his residence. And he's just overgrown, overgrown, and just overgrowing me, overgrowing my residence. And nothing seems to be, would be done about it. I went down to try to speak with him, and I'm not getting any response, so I'm just coming to the city to see what we could come together and do about this situation. I was here the last time, you say you'll come out and look at it and try to put up some regards on the, some protections on the street, stop the traffic going by 100 miles an hour? I haven't seen anything. Nobody did anything or talked to me about anything. So I'm just asking the city to step up and try to do something to make it better for the residents in this area. Like I said, I've been here since 1963 at this residence, and we have, I think me and my family have just taken enough of this, you know, kind of treatment from the city. You know, I've never been late paying my taxes or anything, what have you. I've been there, just like Stroh's have. So, and I've been here, I think the city should just look out for the residents as well as the big corporate places coming into this city. So thank you for your time, and can you imagine what I'm going through? Thank you so much.
Cecil, thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Just the citizen.
I'm Samantha Matthews, 4069 Conway Circle, or right there on Turner Street for the Center for the Arts. Just want to say, I can't fix roads, I can't fix all the problems in here, but we can provide a really great creative options in our community and bring people together around great music and great artistic expression. So at the Turner Center for the Arts, we're so proud to serve the city with those options. And a good example is this Friday, where we have the Music in the Art Park concert series, where we're celebrating local musicians and bringing together people, people who would not walk in the same room, maybe not even be in the same supermarket together, but in the park, we are all one community. And so I invite you, council members, to be at our Music in the Art Park this Friday. It's from 7 to 9, featuring Two Rivers Station, what a great place, a great band to celebrate this Friday. Come out there and mingle with their citizens, because it's a great time. We'll have probably over 500 people out there. Bring your lawn chairs, Smicky's going to have food out there. These kinds of activities are so important for us to build community, because there's so many needs that we have, and the arts gives us a chance to express ourselves in positive ways that build community rather than tearing us apart. Thank you for everything that each of you do, and thank you for also your...
I'm sorry.
I want, the council can, based upon the Constitution and the First Amendment to freedom of speech, can I get additional minutes?
No, you got three minutes.
All right, so I can't get the additional minutes?
But you did use some of it on a request. Would you please reset three minutes? There you go, John.
Can you, okay. Well, you know, I was a lead plaintiff in a civil litigation that lasted 12 long years. I represent 850 blacks and a few whites for association. I know injustice when I see it. You know, May 11, 2023, something historic happened here in this city when you elected the first black city manager here. And it took 163 years. Valdosta was founded in 1860. I'm not going to say it's about race, but it is about tradition. Tradition says that a young lady in 1918 by the name of Mary Turner was pregnant, and she was hanging up by her heel string, and her belly was open, and her fetus fell out, and a white man took his foot and crushed the baby's head. Then they riddled her body with, riddled her body with bullets, and took a cigar and put it into the top of a whiskey bottle for a grave marker. In that same year, in that same week, Sandy Johnson was dragged from one side of this city, from down Patterson Street, back to the fire with true and fro, to signify who runs Valdosta County. Well, I want you to understand that you make a difference up here, make all the difference when you get on one accord, when you don't be bickering and fighting against each other. You know, there is no room. See, back then, in the days when slavery was, they had one that was inside of the house that watched one that, they were in the field, they called them mark of terms, and that changed. We don't need none of that to come back in these days and times. That's long gone. Why don't we look to the positive side? Valdosta is a beautiful city. We can't change nothing. I'm going to take one step forward. I can't change nothing behind that step, and I know that nothing can be changed behind that step. But I do know that progression can be made if we work together and stop fighting among ourselves and acting as if things can't go the way it need to go. This is a beautiful city. It's full of opportunity. There's enough in the arena to be shared by everyone here in this city. You elected someone that, on behalf of all the people, not just representing the one that's in behalf of just some of the people some of the times. We had threatened litigation, but we backed off of litigation based on those facts of change. We don't want to come back and redraw the line in the sand again, because going back to the same old ways, that will never be accepted here again. Now, I don't need no additional time. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, John. Please come forward.
Greetings, mayor, council, and city manager. I had no intentions of saying anything, but when I heard the young man speak about the transit system, I heard no one commenting back to him as to who he can speak to, or no one commented about it, period. It was just, he was a citizen that got up here and spoke, and that's the end of that. So why wasn't there an answer or some kind of solution?
We meet with him after the meeting. This is, this is for you guys to voice without any discussion from us, so you get to voice your...
But there's no direction to...
And then we, yeah, we'll meet with him immediately after. Yep.
I didn't hear anybody tell him that.
It's all right. Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard tonight? Good evening, George.
George, Boston Ryan, 504 Oak Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. I want to thank the council representative for District 3. I identified, after someone called me to publicize the bad roads out near the airport, and I put it on Facebook, needless to say, the council of District 3 saw it, and to make a long story short, it was repaired, fixed, our children are now, and ride the buses safer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Great accomplishment. I think that's the way this city should work. I heard on Facebook, I don't always respond to what I see in here on Facebook, but I heard there was an issue in the city, and I didn't go ask anybody about what was going on, but I was here at the work session the other night, and I still don't know the complete details about what took place, or was about to take place, or may take place tonight, or may be voted on. All I want to say is I don't know about that. But what I do know about it is that the last regular council meeting in Valdosta, and I've traveled all across the state of Georgia, 18 to 20 cities about voting rights, and I saw something in this council the other night. I didn't like it, and I'm not going to sit here and don't say nothing about it. If any one of you have a death in your family, I wish that somebody would say condolences or something to the family. I didn't see that at the regular council meeting, and I don't think nobody would have to go through that in city or county government. I'm not calling any names, but I'm so happy that as I sat in Shark and R that night, and the citizens-to-be-heard portion had passed. But I did hear somebody went behind the mic here and said somebody lost their brother, and the people in the audience responded to that. If any... If any of you in the future lose a family member, I hope that there's a protocol set up in the future that that will never happen again, because it was very disrespectful to a man to get to Free Press, reporter. I go across the state of Georgia, that's the first, you're the first city that I ever seen done that happen, and I'm remiss. I just never thought that would happen. I don't mean to be ugly, but I do mean to be strong. And as I said, I couldn't consider myself a human being if I could not speak at this time about the incident that I witnessed. Peace be unto you, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, George. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard tonight? Seeing none, we're going to close out that portion of the evening and go on with the city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. We have several things taking place throughout the next couple of weeks. For those of you that have spare old-used tires laying around, the city of Valdosta and Lounes County Public Works Departments are hosting a scrap tire recycling event from now through Friday, September the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the Lounes County Public Works Facility, five-five-zero Gil Harbin Industrial Boulevard. The hours to drop off of these tires, seven AM to five PM on weekdays. City and county residents may dispose of up to two hundred standard car or truck tires. Must be off the rim at no cost to the residents. On Saturday, September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at ten AM to two PM at the Courthouse Square, Valdosta Main Street will host Makers Market. Take a trip around the square, discover amazing small businesses, and enjoy a day filled with community vibes. There will be live music, local art, and vendors. We'll also be celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. On Saturday, September the twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from ten AM to two PM at Unity Park, the community is invited to attend Expo Latino. The free event will include cultural resources, music, food, and family activities in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. This event is hosted by the Latino Association of Valdosta in collaboration with the city of Valdosta. I just want to pause for a minute and just reflect. I want to thank all the support that I got from the community in support of myself and the employees that work hard every single day for the city. I just want to thank you for that support. It has not gone unnoticed. Thank you.
Richard, thank you. All right, we'll move on to council comments. I'm going to lead off with a couple more great items this week. A literary fair at the Turner Center for the Arts, I believe ten o'clock is start time for that. It's free and open to the public, a lot of great authors, and pretty much the theme telling you how to write a book. You got, everybody's got a book inside them. Also, in conjunction, well, in parallel to the Makers Market, as it goes on downtown, there will also be a United to Prevent 5K and One Mile Fun Run to bring awareness to the very real problem of suicide. It is a suicide prevention effort. It is twenty-five bucks to run, but they would love you out there just in support of the people that are gathering at Unity Park. Starting at seven for registration, eight for the first run, the 5K, and nine o'clock for the One Mile Fun Run, and then some festivities afterwards for, for everybody involved as well. And council, that's all I have. Thomas, Eric, please.
I'd like to take a chance, since we have a full house, to remind everyone that the city of Valdosta rolled back the millage rate, so we lowered your taxes once again. And to help with some of those issues that y'all were talking about, encourage everyone to vote for Splat, because that'll take care of a lot of their sidewalk issues that you were talking about, some of those flooding issues. When we have Splat on the agenda, up for a vote, make sure you let everyone know to vote on it.
Eric, thank you. Senator, Andy. Gentlemen, ladies.
Make a motion to adjourn, mayor.
I'll accept. Thank you, everybody. All right, looks like I'm not getting into a tux.
Thanks, mayor.